Emily, I want to thank you for your professional equitable representation of all the students in the district, starting off from the kids at Meadowlark all the way to VHS. You conduct yourself in here in a very professional way, and I very much appreciated that. You're always thorough, your comments are poised, your vocabulary is excellent, and you work this in when you have a very busy, busy schedule. So on behalf of the district administrators and this board, I commend you for the way you have represented all of the students in this district during your service. You will be a hard one to follow. Okay, I'm going to leave the summary of the graduation last night to our president, who gave a fine talk. First off, congratulations Sparks. I wish you well in the next level because we all know that the teachers discriminate against gym teachers. We know that, right, Tim?
Yeah.
Yeah, but anyway, good luck Sparks. Represent us well at the county level. I love county awards. A couple of things I want to talk about. First, at High Desert, I went to a couple of things. One was the open house. I remember open houses where you like went in if you were me and you were dragged around from teacher to teacher who finally got the opportunity to tell your parents what a rotten person you were. And I lived in fear of that, right? But the High Desert thing was more of a celebration of just about everybody, and the kids were up there giving testimonials. And they didn't appear to be paid to give the testimonial about how good their teachers were. The facility was impeccable, impeccable. And then I went to a sports night thing, and I've had female students, my older kids are, you know, sports was easier for me to support when I could walk and when I was younger, but I've had girls, so I haven't been involved in the sports. And I looked around at sports night, and there were parents donating all kinds of food. The gym was impeccable, the banners, everything. And I used to sit up here a few years ago and worry about what was happening to the sports program at VHS. And I will say that I think that the sports program at High Desert is going to be single-handedly the big thing that recovers our sports programs at the high school. And it will also be a really, really big attractant for ADA. I think that Tim has talked about, not everyone is destined to go to Major League Baseball or anything, but there are kids who want to compete and play. And there are all kinds of colleges out there that, small colleges that would welcome athletes that don't play Class A ball. But I was never so impressed. And then I want to talk a little bit about Principal Van Ornum. She was up there just talking about the school, talking about the programs, and it sounded like the best sales pitch for a school that I had ever heard. And she's, I don't want to get into this too deeply, and don't be offended, Michelle, but she's not a very emotional person. She's fact-based, and that's why people can learn math from her. But everything she was saying was something that you could go put your finger on tangibly, and what the facility looked like, what the programs looked like, what the performance of the students looked like, and what the culture of the parents at the campus was. That's how I measure things. It's all factual. If anybody would bring their friends, they would be wanting to check out the school. And the reputation that our students and staff make, and the way the facilities look, is really what brings people. And the rest of it's all blips on a computer screen. So congratulations, that whole team over there. VHS, I went to Night of the Stars. That's always very rewarding. It's very humbling to sit up there and realize that we go through an agenda every two weeks and say yes, and sometimes we squabble and, you know, represent our own personalities. But at the end of the day, we really don't have anything to do with the success when it comes to individual kid working through a math problem, or somebody working hard, or the team coming together. And so I like Night of the Stars a ton. It was very inclusive. Everybody, they had awards for everybody, but they were all earned awards. I'm not much on everybody gets a soccer trophy. I didn't go up that way. Oh, there she is. I should repeat what I just said. You'll be able to watch it on YouTube tomorrow morning. I just said wonderful things about your entire team at your school, and you deserved every one of them. Okay, I thought graduation of Class of 2020 was bad because the kids couldn't have a ceremony. Last night I sat there, and we were up here approving a different curriculum. It seemed like every two weeks. People were worried about forced vaccines and who knows what, and the teachers were trying to teach kids on computers. And then some of them could come back, and it was just a mess. So the Class of 2023 had every possible blockade thrown in their way to success. You all made it through it. That's great resilience. And I know on behalf of this board, I'm proud to say that you will go out into the world and say, I come out of Acton, California, and it will mean something. So congratulations to you all. You know, I've told this story again before, so I'm not going to say it again. An art teacher visited my home at the beginning of summer when I was in second grade. I'd just finished second grade. And arts has always held a spot in my heart because of that visit. But I went to this play at Meadowlark, and in my eight years, going on eight years as a school board member, in my almost 18 years as a parent in this district, I have never seen anything so incredible as this play. And I'll tell you why. Don't take this the wrong way, superintendent. But do you know there are superintendents out there that make $400,000, $450,000 a year? Do you know that every time budgets get cut, what's the first thing that goes out the window? Oh, we don't have money for arts. We don't have money for music. Well, without arts and music, how is the individual supposed to express their individuality? We're all individuals. If we were all like me, the world would be perfect, but we're not. Okay, wow, terrible, only I would say that. But think about that. The individuality of people is shown and expressed through arts and music and stuff that lets people show their creativity. And when you can have an appreciation for the creativity of others and what brings them as an individual, that's what makes community. Me yelling at you is not community. Me being loud is not community. That's community. And when you take arts out of the classroom and put them outside and lead everybody to believe that there's not enough money for arts. Well, I haven't seen much individuality of people putting together slide rules and sitting there and having a math competition. I commend you all for being able to do that, but that is not what builds people, and tolerance, and civility, and all those other things. So what happened this time is you have a young teacher, student teacher, who's being supported by a veteran teacher who has been my child, Tammy's homeroom teacher probably 17 different times. She's the longest veteran of Meadowlark School, and she's doing great at the high school now. But at the end of the day, art was brought back into that school, and it was all an internal effort. And I know the community supports arts. I know that. I like that. But the teachers put the whole thing together. You know who funded it? The teachers. Oh, teachers spending their own money, right? That's a new thing. Wrong. But everybody got together. Young teacher comes in, does a play. She said that they did this play at her school when she was in fourth grade. Brings it in here. The whole campus came together. I learned more about 1850s United States history in 45 minutes for a bunch of little kids, and they were all participating. Nobody paid for an enrichment program. It was all part of it. So let's talk about what that means long term. I hear people paddling these words that they learn at the conference. Oh, collaborative, throw a few out there, whatever you know. I can't even think of them. They make me sick. But they're just words, and they mean nothing. But when you give a teacher the ability to take art and show somebody that this art that you just drew shows perspective, or this play you just did teaches, when you take arts away from the teacher, you take an integral part of the curriculum in which that teacher can reach the individual student. So here's what I would really like to see as a school board member. This is not a directive. You know me better than that. If I sit up here and nag long enough, stuff shows up on the agenda. But we have a really cool principal network, and the principals are working with each other. And Lester over here is a sales rep and a brand person, and you don't know where I work. I'm big on that, too. But we don't have an ability for people to look at kindergarten and go, I'm going all the way to Vasquez High School. Well, what can they tie onto? Well, this is one of the things they can tie onto. So I would hope that the kids who did this play, and it was amazing. They had the play two days, and there was a completely different cast on both days. So they reached every kid in the fourth grade class. So what I would like to see is this arts thing that we're talking about, get it back in the classroom. We don't need to depend on the outside world, and whether or not somebody can get a ride to school or enrichment programs, if you've got the money or not. Move this, those kids, take that with you to their fifth grade and sixth grade, and move them up. In no time, you will have a performing arts program and everything else you need. So this, Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Scheidig, you did a wonderful, wonderful thing. It impressed me. I'm always impressed by things. But this struck home to me, so thank you. This is an example of, if you're on the board, if you're a board member, and you kind of talk about what's important to you, and then you let staff figure out how it's important to them, if at all, and when it fits into the work cycle and stuff. I was talking about floor space this year. I didn't have to dog anybody, so I very much appreciate this. This is important to me because in my world, if you have a financial need, a break-even need, and you don't have the floor space for that, the teachers are coming back from COVID and can't reach the kids, and then they're stacked in the room so thick that a teacher can't reach the kid. The teacher can look at a kid over there and say, that kid is really bored. This one is acting up. This one needs additional support. So if you don't have the floor space, it's like shopping and, you know, not that I buy these cards, but did you ever go try to buy a Mother's Day card like the morning of? You know, they're all picked through. There's a thousand people there, and you just can't deliver the service you want. So floor space is important to me because if we have 1440 is our need, and we don't have 1440, we're, I don't know what we're doing. I don't know what we're talking about. We're not focused up. And then to Lester's point, once they get here, what are you doing to keep them here? Sometimes people move and say, I don't like it over there. And I've heard good things. It's like when I talked about Principal Van Ornum's sales pitch the other night. It was like they know why they want to be there. They can look at what they're seeing. But when you get there, if the service level is poor, so this is a, number one, be self-sufficient. I will talk a little bit more about this in the budget, but think about what we, if we were ADA sufficient right now, or our budget was that, and we would have got the extra $5.5 million in grants, what would we be doing now? Think about our programs there. We're kind of supplementing and depending on reserves. But a couple of things I noticed, these buildings got painted back here. I never heard a word about it, but I went back there to go to the teacher colloquium or whatever it was. All the buildings are painted, and I went around to the back of them to see if they're painted, you know. Yeah, there's a back to a building, right? You don't just, you know, shine it up front. But there's all kinds of work going on in the facilities. This ADA thing has gone on for so long, it predates me by two decades. The charter money was coming in so fast that this room was created, all these offices. This used to be a library, and this used to be special ed rooms with bathrooms and sinks and things like that. So it's one of those things where when there was that dependence going on, that financial, I can't say that the focus was on the students here. It was kind of like, as long as we keep that rolling, we got the money. And I understand that reasoning. And as Board Member Costin said tonight, we're on the right track, and I'm seeing that being measured by the addition of floor space. I think my direct question, and Lester touched on this, was if we keep this pace up of adding students, and I think you already answered this, when do we run out of the ability to fund at the level of $49,000 a year to put on an extra 50 or 60 kids? So there's two questions. Number one, do you have the space? And number two, how can you budget? So take a note in 15 minutes or whenever, I'm going to be asking you in the budget presentation, how much money you have freed up in fund balances, number one, for new permitted construction, number two, for DSA retrofitting and stuff like that. And I'm going to ask you to project that out in the budget in your fancy spreadsheet, and we'll answer some questions later about what kind of facilities we can build and why, and what the focus is for that. But thank you for bringing this up. I think that some of the logistics that we're talking about, I think there's a program like this back here now that is kind of mimicking this. So there's not a huge impact, anything. I think you've got enough room back there for a turnaround. I've been a Parks and Urban Forest Manager, which means the parks in Beverly Hills fell under my watch. Beach sand is not in appropriate use due to air quality. We don't like to breathe sand, and I also don't like to see kids throwing sand in the eyes of other kids. I've had that happen, too. So good job, guys. Really good job. Please be diligent about what this looks like next year, and have a good relationship with DSA and not one where people are coming out here and popping you with cease work orders and that kind of thing. I very much appreciate your work. I want to commend staff on something different. I have waited literally years for this reporting format to come through. I've asked for it numerous times. This is the reporting format. There's variances to it in my world. Anybody that picks this up, it kind of tells you, if you don't know why we're doing this, it's all right here. Why or how we come to the decision we made. Here's the factors. What decision needs to be made, and what's fiscal impact. This is standard. I'm hoping that this becomes the model because, number one, it's professional. It's very professional. And when you put this stuff out to people, they go, these people, and it requires staff focus. It's not, you know, just writing something down and standing up here. It memorializes the process. I have been to court numerous times where my staff reports going for years on recommendations and CEQA things and all that kind of thing become court evidence. And then finally, one of the things that's been very frustrating for me is when you come on the board, when I come on the board, when new people come on the board, there are issues that go on and on for years, like the solar panels. So they were being discussed two years when I was out in the audience for five years. They were being discussed, and then they'll drop off the face of the earth for a while while Edison is doing the design or something. Then they'll resurface, and everybody thinks it's a new issue. And one of the most difficult things for a public employee is to get a council or a board that thinks that there has to be a new campaign for new something new, and they have no respect for the work that's been done by people here before. That's what number five, the civility statement, is maintain respect for the rich history of the districts and efforts of those who served in the past. So if I want to know something, and I want to do my research as a constituent or board member, I just search, and I find the keywords in this, and I can track down, or I can say background. And then furthermore, in terms of efficiency, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. It says, hey, this district's been here 138 years, and it's going to be here a long after I'm gone. This district will not depend on any of us significantly over any period of time. But when I read this, I look at it, and if I were to say, Kevin, why are you changing these now? You're saying, well, the breakdown of these is occurring. So how long were they in? Well, they were in for about five years. So if I were to ask you some captain obvious questions based on the technology, when do you think you should budget in your outlay for the next 10 years? How many times you think? And it's all right here. It's captain obvious stuff. I'm hoping that the standard reporting from staff turns into this. This is exemplary. Thank you. My question to you is, excellent presentation. My question to you is, we are responsible between us and LACO for the charters, their LCAP documents. How are we, you have anything you don't want to tell me about that?
No.
Good. Do you have sufficient resources to make sure that their LCAPs are fine?
Yeah.
And then once we go through that, then they're under the same auspices of LACO. So LACO would tell you, no, this isn't going to fly.
Correct.
I didn't see that you're stashing fund balances. I'll get to the fund balance thing about what's available in the budget part. But this is my seventh round of this, seventh time looking at this. I do understand the process. It's becoming more and more clear. I think there's something to what Lester said. I don't know, I don't know, they got hotel.com that tells you don't stay there or whatever, but I'm wondering, what is the process for reporting that gets our ratings that he's talking about, that the realtors and everybody look at? How do we input to that to where, you know, parents that want to move to a town? I mean, expand on this. Burn up my time. I want to hear more about this, please. Okay, so the part about community review, LACO requires, LACO requires that you reach out to specific groups. And if you don't reach out to those groups and show evidence, it's my understanding that you actually tape those, or somehow you have documentation?
An artifact, a photo.
That says that the SPED group was talked to, that the teachers were talked to, that you opened up public hearings. I know there were times I went where I was the only parent there, but, so there has been input from stakeholders. LACO is ultimately the one that is going to tell you whether or not this is sufficient, whether you're meeting your goals. And this mainly focuses about basically identifying your areas of struggle, which is typically the old Title I students. And this is a way of giving local control to the districts where they can spend the money, so you don't have somebody doing a line item for $1,000 member those days. And so it's an accountability piece. So I like the presentation, but just please, we can't afford to have charters not doing their audits and their LCAPs, please. Thank you. All right, you ready? First off, ADA, I mean, sort of grabbing up a sheriff deputy and going to people's houses and banging on their door. I don't know that that's legal. You have what you have. And I think that coming out of COVID, you have to realize kids don't want to go to school unless their friends are there. And if they're being bullied or sorted or excluded, they don't want to come to school. So I think the initiatives that we have about making sure that there's equality and all the kinds of things that I talk about, I think that's the key. As far as these developments, if your town is anti-development, don't depend on developer fees. That's pretty easy to figure out. Next thing, I don't know that there's, that's not a trailer court out there, and I don't know how many young people are able to buy up with them. Houses and pads look pretty big. But I do see that there are going to be houses there. I also see people that can't figure out, there's probably $50 million in grading work up there just to begin with. And so, yeah, if you think it's not happening, I'm sorry, it is. And so I'm sure that when you can talk about what the developer fees are going to be, and I would hope that everybody in this town, when you're dealing with the developers, got that kind of money into that project, you maintain a relationship that's not animistic with them, where you could tell them, hey, are you a part of our community? Do you want to sponsor the sports complex we're talking about? Because I'm fixing to tie into you about that. But if you're up there yelling at people all the time and trying to shut their job down, that doesn't get you very far. I don't sell out to developers. When it comes to doing projections, I want Santa Claus and Easter Bunny and Tooth Fairy to be at my house tonight, but they will not be. I can guarantee you, no matter how much I talk about what's going to happen. I've been on this board for going into eight years. I watched the projections, and I watched them become reality. So the projections last year were 9:03. So it was flawed because we're at 1,000 now. And that has nothing to do with some projection somebody made or something like that. It's people doing work and getting programs rolling around. Well, some of us are being bashed all the time, but there's a lot of work going on by the staff to put these programs in places that are producing the results we're seeing right now, and it was held silently. So we're holding our market. I want to be clear about this isn't something for us up here to tell the school district how to run the money. None of us are qualified to do that. That's why we hire you. If you can't do it, I'll take your money, if I think I'm an expert. But none of us are that kind of experts in finance when it comes to school. The only reason we're doing this right now is because, correct me if I'm wrong, LACO demands that we do this to be transparent to our public. It's not a display of how smart I am at running money. That's what this is. So now let's get into some hard questions. What amount of charter encroachment has there been on our general fund? In other words, we know that you don't make any money. We know that it's illegal. So have we had to spend more of our kids' money to support the charters?
No.
Good. Thank you. Do you have any anticipated legal exposures that you've had to put in some fund balance that you can't really talk about? Is there any big pending legal payoffs like the $700,000 that Lynn David had to rat hole three years ago that nobody could know about when the grand jury said, pay this, or your partners are going to go to jail? None of those? Wow. So we don't have $700,000 rat hole somewhere? That's good. We talked about development fees. They'll show up when they do. But I want a good relationship with those people. And anybody that can't relate to them, good. You don't sell out to them. It's already been approved. We don't give them any more or less. But it'd be a good thing for that person to realize, I come into this town, I want that place clean. I want it right. I want to make sure that the people down the road don't get run off in floods, and the people who live here aren't subsidizing them while they make money. But that out of the way, that's what the county is for. That out of the way, I think we should be able to walk up to them at some point, not be in their pocket and say, how much are you willing to put in a sports stadium? Because I'm going to talk about that right now. In all your fund balances, what amount of money can you transfer legally without LACO going, oh, no, you can't do that. That's for kids' education. What amount of fund balance do you have right now that you can transfer into a permitted new construction? If you look at the warrant registers, sometimes they hit $600,000 apiece. They hit, there's sometimes they hit 1.2 on the pass-through for the charters. Nobody understands pass-through. You got to give them their money before you get yours. Okay? I remember last year when Mr. Merza was up there, I'm glad you could run off to the beach and leave us all here, but we love your replacement. Hassan, you're the best. Lynn David, you were the best. So I recall last year seeing reserve levels at 72%. And of course, that strikes me that you had all this money coming in from the state, this one-time stuff, and that's going away. So in other words, where I come from, 72% down to 48%, that's a big jump out of nowhere, and that's nothing that this district did. And that Hallmark card I gave about how important arts are, I just told you. I read things. They're taking money back that they gave you and promised you. That's called betrayal and deception. They didn't ask me if I want to do that when I filled out my tax check, did they? So this idea that we've got to have somebody on the outside world making arts important, you should talk to Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Scheidig in the fourth grade class, and all the teachers at Meadowlark, and all the staff to figure out how to keep a program going. The governor will rob art money from your own children. What a farce. Okay, the STIRS rates, where I come from, that's comparable to workman's comp rate. So if you're a tree company, and you've got the right mod factor, you're paying $40 for every $100 of payroll. Is that comparable to here? So in other words, a rate of 19% would mean if I pay $100 in payroll, I pay $19 in benefit programs.
Correct.
And that's mandated. The district does not set those fees. And of course, everybody remembers the old days when the stock market was booming, people were paying nothing, and now all of a sudden they're coming back. Do we have future liabilities when it goes up even worse? There's more losses on the retirement funds of people that retired 10 years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, I bank on that personally because I could be one of those people. I'll be welcoming you to Walmart if things don't go right when I'm 72 years old. I'll end by saying this. This is what the work is. There's so much of this work that staff does that's mandated by the state and the county. They're not here to exercise my whim on what I want to know this week. They are here doing this stuff. Very few of the things that are brought forward to us to discuss are initiatives of yours. You're just keeping your head above water. Do you have any relaxations on you? water. Do you have any relaxations on you compared to what's required of Long Beach Unified?
That's it.
Same thing. It's just they got a lot more kids, a lot more staff. So I appreciate everything y'all do. One of the high points of my service on the board is we've always had somebody in that spot that can, the superintendent just cut loose, and you just tell us what's going on. I appreciate your professionalism. And I'm so glad you're here. Thank you.